All right, 12th of Wednesday, and we're gonna begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thanks everyone for showing up. We're gonna have presentations from all the local nonprofits today who are present. So looking forward to learning as much as we can and hearing from everyone. Uh, let's see, do we have any order, any, is there a?
Our agenda?
Yeah, who was, who was up first?
It's Emily.
Emily.
Hi.
Welcome.
Um, so I am Emily Olson. I'm the Executive Director of Cloud City Conservation Center. Um, and I'm here today with Udalia. Let me introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Udalia Contreras and I am the CEO for Full Circle of Lake County.
And we reached out to schedule this work session um, because we believe that nonprofits are a vital part of our community and we really, um, we think this is such a great opportunity that all three of you commissioners have started at the same time and we wanted to take advantage of your Lake County Government 101 um, and share about how nonprofits function and how we contribute to the community. Um, I will clarify, we are not planning to speak on the work of any individual nonprofit today. Um, we really wanted to talk about how nonprofits can partner with local government and how we work and how our decisions and how our finances work. Um, because I think those are really important things to understand when we're partnering. Um, just like you all have a formal decision-making process and um, there are ways in which the county government works. Um, that applies to our organizations as well. Um, and I think, you know, as we all move forward to support the community, um, there are many different things that each of us can do. Um, and understanding the role that we can both play can really help support our partnerships and how we can better support the community together. Um, so, Matt, do you want me to take the, the mouse and I can click?
Yeah.
Emily, you're welcome to sit over here so you can see it and click more easily.
Easier on the back.
This is the guest chair. Sorry Udalia, really. I know, I'm so sorry.
Just thought of that. Um, and I do, I do wanna shout out and thank all of our other Lake County nonprofits that are in the room today or online. Um, we tried to invite as many that, as we were aware of, um, as possible and please feel free to chime in if there's something that, that we say that, um, you think there's more information that could be added or shared with our commissioners or the commissioners ask a question, please ask questions as we go. Um, don't, don't worry about interrupting us. Um, please chime in. Um, I think we're really lucky in this community to have so much experience and knowledge, um, to support the work that's happening together. Um, so I did wanna have, add a little bit of framework for today's conversation.
Just look like, do you mind making the things smaller? Yeah, just so we can see the whole thing.
Yeah, um, so this is something, we do use this at C4. We try to frame, um, what level we're having a conversation at. Um, and we typically use, uh, 30,000 feet as way up in the sky, the airplane flying over. Um, 14,000 feet, which aligns with our lovely mountains surrounding us is really, you know, where we have our strategic conversations. And then three foot is our execution. And we often say that our staff operate at three feet and our board operates up at 30,000 feet. And so our hope for today was that we would have a conversation around nonprofits in Lake County at that 30,000-foot level. We might dip down and that's totally fine. Uh, but we often use this to remind each other, hey, we are trying to have a conversation up at 30,000 feet and we, we've now gotten down to the three-foot level. Let's, let's go back up. Do I just?
Yes, anyone, maybe? Or down in there?
Thank you. Um, so I am actually going to hand this over to the lovely Alice Q, who has, I think, a great perspective on nonprofits in Lake County.
Um, for sure. So I'm Alice Q. Um, for those of you who haven't known me, I started Full Circle in 1991. And, um, I have been involved in the nonprofit world for 40 years, my whole entire career. But I'm retired, so it's so lovely to be here as a citizen. Um, and I'm passionate about nonprofits in general. I feel like I've really seen how much they can really do in a community. A good way to look at it is there's three sectors that create the conditions for our communities to thrive. One of them is our local businesses, right? They offer services, they bring in dollars, they pay taxes, they have employees. They're, they're a very important part of our community. The government is also really important too, because the government takes care of our, you know, sewer and, and our roads and really essential services, safety, et cetera, in our community. So really pivotal. Um, and then our, our nonprofits are really the third sector and they run kinda like a business and kinda like the government. So we'll explore a lot of that today. I think it's a lot of misunderstanding about how nonprofits are run. But, um, the nonprofits typically will take care of issues that arise out of the community and express need or an observed need and are really able to create, um, whatever those kinds of services are. And there's a lot of different kinds of nonprofits as we will continue to see today. I like to think that if our government is the, is the spine or the backbone of our community, providing these essential services, the nonprofit center, uh, sector really is the soul of the community. It listens to the community. It creates the community that we have. And I'll just kinda say, when I started Full Circle in 1991, there were no nonprofits here. There were a couple, you know, um, you know, Outward Bound was around and some of the others that are really longstanding. But, um, having watched how the nonprofits have partnered with government and, and partnered with businesses and created the very community we have today is a real testament to how things are done in Lake County. And I'm so thrilled to meet you all and happy to be here. And if, uh, 40 years of experience can add something to the conversation, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Alice.
Yeah, thanks, Alice.
And I, we don't have an official statistic to cite, but I have heard over the years during my time in Lake County that we do have the highest number of nonprofits per capita, um, in the state. So we do have quite a few. Um, yeah, and so this slide is really to talk about how nonprofits add to a community. Um, we're gonna get more into the, um, you know, legal IRS definition of a nonprofit, but really, these are the things that, um, most nonprofits do in some way. Like Alice spoke to, we help build social capital. We can help address social issues. Um, we can help leverage resources. Uh, we'll talk about our, you know, how our finances work a little bit later on. Uh, but there are oftentimes, there are funding opportunities that only the government can access. And then there are funding opportunities that only 501(c)(3)'s or nonprofits can, can access. Um, we can help provide essential services. You know, there are services that you all are mandated to provide, uh, but then there are also, um, services beyond that that a community may need and that's an area that we can, we can help fill in. Um, we can also advocate, um, for change in the community based off of what we're hearing from the community. Um, I, I personally think that Lake County nonprofits do an amazing job engaging with the community. Um, if you wanna know what's, what's happening, what are people experiencing, what are the challenges? Um, the staff at Full Circle, at C4, advocates, um, are gonna know. They're, they're talking to community members on a daily basis. Um, we can also promote civic engagement. Um, I think Carly from LC Bag was gonna try to join us if she, if she got out of another meeting on time. Um, and LC Bag has really been focused on civic engagement and how can we help our community members engage in the civic process, engage with our local government, um, help them understand what our local government does and how, how to best help you inform your decisions. Um, and so, yeah, we really help weave a stronger social fabric. And I'm gonna hand it over to Udalia to talk a little bit more about what we are.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so what is a nonprofit? Um, nonprofits are legally defined by the IRS. Those organizations, um, operated exclusively for religious charitable scientific testing for public safety. Um, so all of those things, I think, um, and especially seeing how many nonprofits we have, I feel like we do hit on a lot of those. Um, and we do, I mean, I think the, something out there is that we don't pay taxes. Um, we still do, our employees pay taxes. Um, even when we give out, for example, if, um, we have funding from a foundation that wants to do something with a wellness dive in, we try to figure out, okay, how do we make sure that our employees get, um, the most of that? And then we have to figure out, can we give a whole amount or do how? Then they have to pay taxes or we'll pay the taxes for them. So trying to figure out those pieces. Um, so our, all of our funding, um, does have to be invested back into our missions, visions. Um, some, some nonprofits also have values. So also this, I think, probably is, is the thing that drives, um, the work that we do in each of the nonprofits. So we, it's, it's not, um, I think this helps because even if we are seeing needs in the community, we can't just, um, this will help us guide, like, is this something that fits into our mission, vision, our values? Um, or oftentimes I, for me personally, I find myself looking at grants out there and trying to really force them and then going back to our missions. It's like, okay, actually, you know, this doesn't fit here, but it could fit either in one of the other nonprofits. So, um, this is really helpful and especially for our boards who are way up at the 30,000, uh, feet foot level to also make sure going back to this and, okay, is, is this still aligning? Is the work that we're doing still aligning, um, with the work that we're doing?
And I, I think that is a really important thing to know about nonprofits is really we cannot spend funds outside of our mission. Um, the IRS will not allow it. Um, and that is why we are granted the tax exempt status and it's so that those funds, any profit we have, any taxes that we would have paid if we were a business, those are reinvested back into our mission and our community. Um, and really it is up to our boards, uh, to make sure that we are in alignment with that. So every nonprofit has a board. Um, our boards are typically volunteers. I'm not aware of any nonprofit board where, um, their board members are, are not volunteers. Um, but they're community members.
We'd not be like fighting to be on that list.
Yeah, yeah. Um, oftentimes, um, and you know, this can, this will vary from by nonprofit. Um, oftentimes the executive director or maybe other members of the staff might be ex officio board members. Um, so I had a board meeting last night. I was there as an ex officio board member for C4 and that means that I'm not allowed to vote. So I'm allowed to attend the meeting, give my insight, give my input. Um, but when it comes to a vote, I don't get a say. Um, and I think that is the case for a lot of nonprofits in our community. Um, there are also a huge variety of boards. The IRS just requires that we have at least three board members and they meet at least once a year. Um, some of our boards in our community meet on a monthly basis. Some meet, um, six times a year, some meet four. It varies by organization. Uh, but oftentimes really we are bringing decisions to the board, um, around finances. Does this shift in our work align with our mission? Uh, but that's something you might often hear when you're talking to a nonprofit. Um, if we're starting to get into the area of, hey, this is a new program. Um, this amount of money is not in my budget. Um, that's when we might say, hey, I've gotta go to my board and that, um, our boards don't meet as frequently as you all. And so it might mean, hey, this is gonna take a few months to make a decision. Um, and that, one of the things I love about Lake County is we really do have every type of board represented across all of our nonprofits. Um, most organizations will start on the left with a founding or operating board. Um, that's a board that's really running the organization and the work of the 501(c)(3). Um, and it usually correlate, the board involvement usually correlates with the organization's, um, capacity. So C4, when I first joined C4 in 2019, and I'm sorry if I speak about C4 a lot, I really promise it's only because of the organization I know best and know the most details about. When I, when I started, I was the only full-time staff member and so we really had a operating board. Um, we had board members who were involved in our day-to-day operations, um, in running the organization. And we have really since shifted to a governing board where our board now meets only a few times a year and they're really helping with, um, high-level decisions. They're up at that 30,000-foot level, not down at three feet.
Some people call it a working board, right?
Yeah, there's also a working board.
Yeah.
Um, I think another great example, and Chris, please tell me if I'm out of line, but, um, I believe that Planned Pet Hood is really an operating board, that you all are running the work of the organization.
Yeah, we have no staff.
Yeah, um, and so it really, really shifts in between, you know, how involved the board is and it's really gonna change from organization to organization. Um, but.
Can I just add, Emily, the board is also typically the supervisor of the executive director. So most EDs don't have a boss. The board is their boss and so decisions that are made about their role as executive directors should be made by the board or informed by the board. Is that sound clear?
That's really familiar to our structure too. We have two staff, technically, these two over here. And the, and we are the only supervisors of those people. So, yeah.
Yeah. No, I think that is, that is a really, um, great point and is really, um, I think explains a lot about how a lot of organizations operate. Um, so, yeah, the board really has, um, three legal duties. Um, they have the duty of care, which is to, um, ensure that all assets, um, are, they're being prudent and they're using them, you know, in alignment with the way they're supposed to be using them. Um, the duty of loyalty, um, which is first that all activities and financial transactions are in alignment with the organization's mission. Um, our board members do have to disclose conflicts of interest and in a small town, that happens quite frequently. Um, and, you know, I always think it's exciting to, I personally love, I think that when we disclose conflicts of interest, it's a great way to see the web of how we're all connected in this community. Um, and then making best decisions that are in the best interest of the nonprofit and not for any individual or for any board member or for any one of our staff. It's really our board's, um, responsibility to make decisions for the organization as a whole. Um, and then the duty of obedience, so to make sure that we are following, following all laws and regulations, our own bylaws. Every nonprofit has a set of bylaws, um, that we are required to follow. It generally is around, um, board operations and kind of that 30,000-foot level and that we adhere to our own, um, mission and our stated purpose. Um, in addition to that, our boards are often, um, engaged in legal matters, in financial oversight, strategic planning, um, and ensuring that we have adequate controls in place. Um, so, for example, my board just approved our employee handbook. Um, they approve our financial policies. Um, any organizational-wide policy at C4 has to be run by our board, um, to make those decisions. And I just remembered the other piece I was gonna add in about the executive director and the board. Um, the board is responsible for setting the executive director's salary. Um, and usually that salary is where is the starting point for the rest of our positions, um, within the organization. Um, and I think that is an important thing that has come up in Lake County. Um, and I can't speak for all organizations, but I know a number of our organizations share and use the Colorado Nonprofit Salary Survey that goes out every two years to determine an appropriate compensation for our highest-paid staff.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
And one of the responsibilities of an executive director is if there aren't finances, almost every nonprofit I've ever been a part of, the ED would continue to keep things running even if they weren't getting paid, right? I mean, it's the ultimate responsibility as with the executive director. So although the board sets that, if there isn't funds for that, you have to understand that people are nodding this to make money, but are really there because it's a mission, their heart and soul. And I've seen that happen a lot when, when things get tight.
So, yeah, a little bit more about nonprofit finances. So, um, we are required to have a budget similar to the county every year. Our fiscal years may be a little bit different. I know that there's a number of nonprofits that operate, um, don't necessarily operate on the calendar year. Um, and generally, an executive director is not allowed to spend funds outside of what is in the budget. Um, every organization would have their own policy on that. Um, but I, I do think that is a, a very important thing to know that we, um, we have to operate within those budgets. Um, our boards provide financial oversight. They typically are involved in setting the budget and approving the budget. Um, typically, an organization would have a process for if you need to go outside of the budget, what does that look like? How do you bring that to the board? Um, the, thanks Elsa.
You're good.
The IRS, um, does require that we file a 990 every year and those, uh, forms are typically publicly available. You can always request one from a nonprofit you're working with or, um, if you Google it online, I think ProPublica usually has them. I will say, they're usually a few years behind. Um, cause we've, we're just now starting to work on our 990s from 2024. Those have to be submitted, um, usually six months from the end of your fiscal year and then, um, takes the IRS a while to get those online. Um, and then a lot of our funders also require very significant financial reporting. It will vary by funder, um, and the size of the grant, but a number of nonprofits hold grants where we have to submit every single receipt. Um, so not just for our own accounting purposes internally, but when we submit a grant report, we also have to, um, submit those receipts. We might also have to submit client surveys, evidence of our impact, how we use those funds and what we were, what we were able to do. Um, and then we also, in Colorado, we have to register with the Secretary of State and we have to file an annual report that includes our financials as well. Um, it's usually timed with the 990 and it would be the same financials. Um, and then finally, another level of financial accountability. Um, if we receive more than $750,000 in federal funds every year, um, we would have to do, comply with additional, um, audit requirements. And I, I would also add that most funders, if your budget is over a million dollars a year, you would also have to have an audit. Um, and so those are, same way, you all have to have an audit. Um, we go through it as well. And when we apply for a grant, these are typically all things we have to submit proof of. We have to submit our current financials, previous years, our 990. If we have had an audit, we have to submit those things. Um, and so, well, this might all be behind the scenes. We really wanted to be transparent with you all that we, there is a huge amount of financial oversight in how we, how we operate. Uh, and then I also, I just wanted to call out that fiscal sponsorship is a thing. Um, we are so lucky to have the Lake County Community Fund here in Lake County who operates as a fiscal sponsor for a number of nonprofits. Um, and this allows, um, an organization to collect charitable donations without actually necessarily being their own 501(c)(3), um, organization with the IRS. Um, and that can be in, in many different ways. It could be, um, that a group just hasn't, they aren't ready to take that step to become their own nonprofit, um, to have, you know, all of those controls in place to run their own organization. Or it could also be, for example, um, the school district, which may not be able to, um, apply for a grant as a 501(c)(3) um, in the way they operate now, but they could get fiscal sponsorship through the community fund and then they would be able to apply for grants that apply to the work that they're doing. And the community fund would be, um, ultimately held responsible to make sure that those funds are used correctly. Hi, Kelly.
Hi there. Sorry to, sorry to interrupt. Um, I was, I just wanted to do a little correction. The way that the Lake County Community Fund handles its, um, fiscal sponsorships, they do not accept all financial and legal liabilities for that group and it's expressly stated in the, um, agreement that they all enter into each year, the fiscal sponsorship agreement. I used to be secretary, um, for the Lake County Community Fund for many years. So, and I still help them, um, as far as just making sure that the right, uh, paperwork goes to the right organization. So that has not changed.
Thank you, Kelly. Yeah, um, I just, we included this, cause, yeah, we wanted to acknowledge the, the great work they do. And also, if you go and search for an organization that you think might be a 501(c)(3) and they don't show up, that might be why, um, that they have a fiscal sponsor.
Yeah, and I just might add too, as, as Emily noted, we do sponsor several government entities.
Um, the Lake County Public Library, for example, we are their fiscal sponsor
and one great story there is this past December, they received an estate gift of $253,000 from a, uh, an estate of a, of a patron that had passed away. That would not have happened, um, without fiscal sponsorship. So it does allow these government entities, Lake County Public Library, um, School District, um, Get Outdoors, Let Hill, um, receive those kinds of charitable contributions. And the disaster refund is another example. That was a fund that our board established, um, prior COVID when we had a wildfire season in 2019 and it was pivoted to, to accept donations during the COVID period and raised over $300,000. Um, that went directly to rent and utilities for residents that had lost jobs when Governor Polish shut the state down March 14, 2020. And, um, so that was an example of how the community fund can pivot and, and support our community.
Thank you, John. I will say, I am not an expert on fiscal sponsorship at all. It is not a part of C4's operations. Um, but, yeah. Um, so we also wanted to talk about, um, where does all of this money come from? Um, most nonprofits are really trying to diversify their funding sources as much as possible. Um, you know, we hear about grants all of the time when we're talking about nonprofits, um, but as you can see, they are just one of many ways in which we, um, may bring in, bring, bring in funding. Um, you know, we, John just gave a great example of a major gift. Um, that's probably one of the largest gifts I've ever heard of in Lake County. Um, but also, you know, we may be getting smaller gifts. Um, maybe, you know, Colorado gives day is a great example of how a lot of small contributions can add up to quite a bit of support in our community. Um, many of us hold events. Um, many of us, um, we may also have earned income. Um, so C4, for example, has several different earned income streams where we, we make money for the services that we provide. Um, we may enter into contracts. Uh, we can make money off of interest from our bank accounts. Um, we can enter, uh, we can get gifts through, uh, employee match programs. There is a large variety of ways in which we can earn money. Um, it is all disclosed in our financials, um, where those, where those funds are coming from. I will say that, um, you know, grants are going to have the largest amount of oversight and reporting on them. Um, we are all always looking for general operating funds, which are funds that we can use towards our full budget. Oftentimes grants are gonna be really restricted to a specific program, um, a specific aspect of our work. And so we're looking for funds that can also help us pay our rent, um, that can help us pay our employees, pay for their healthcare, um, all sorts of things. Um, and so really, um, from, from my experience in nonprofits, um, one of our big goals with funding is to diversify our funding as much as possible. Um, that also helps make us more resilient to, uh, things like the recent executive order, um, which I think we all had a, oh shit moment, excuse my language. Um, and, you know, it was really frightening for, for some organizations and I know for our local government as well. Um, and so having diversified funding sources, earning money through events and through donations really helps us weather things like that. Um, and we can make a financial profit. If we wanna be sustainable, we probably should make a profit, uh, but we are legally required to reinvest those dollars back into our mission. We are not allowed to use those dollars to give anyone a bonus or a raise. Um, there is legally, um, in our structure, there's no way that someone would earn that money because we're not a for-profit business. We don't have a legal individual owner. Um, but we can make a profit as long as we put that money back into our work.
And I would say most nonprofits are trying to make.
Yeah, most of us are trying.
Make money than they need in their budget.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, uh, another great use, if we do make a profit, again, I can't speak for, um, any other organizations in the room, but a lot of us are trying to, um, grow our own reserves. So we are allowed to have savings. Um, and many organizations are trying to grow those reserves because it, um, comes in handy. because it comes in handy, handy on a rainy day when your funding unexpectedly gets cut. You can also use it to, to expand your work in new ways. But we are trying our best to be financially responsible and make sure that we, we have something in our back pocket if we need to.
And a lot of funders, in my experience, like to see that as well. Like to see us earning a month, months of reserve. Because that was my, when starting this work, I was like, well, why are we asking for money if we have money already? Why did, why do we need their money? And then some of the funders kind of explained to me and really like to see that because that makes us financially responsible.
And it makes us eligible for grant funding. It means that we have match funds. We don't have that, you're likely to get rejected for grants, not because the work isn't important, but because you can't prove that you can financially match that fund.
And so like all businesses in our community, we do have an economic impact. We contribute to overall community stability and economic growth by creating jobs. Our operational spending, if we are a local organization, a lot of our money is spent locally, especially if we are paying rent, if we're hiring caterers, if we're hosting events, hosting meetings. Those dollars are all spent locally. We're also providing, oftentimes providing essential services that otherwise might not exist or would fall on you all to provide. And we also support workforce development. Nonprofits are often willing to hire individuals that may struggle to find a job elsewhere. Or we can help individuals work towards finding a job if that's in alignment with our mission. And so in Colorado, nonprofits actually support 10% of all jobs across our state, which is in alignment with the national average. It is, it is right on par. We do not have the exact numbers for you in Lake County. I think that's something we've talked a lot about looking into because it has shifted over the last few years to really figure out how much of our local economy we're supporting. But at the end of the presentation, we have a list of the number of nonprofits in our community. And I, I think that might give you a good sense of the number of jobs we are potentially supporting. And then on average, for every million dollars spent by a nonprofit in Colorado, we support five jobs within our own organization and two jobs in other industries. I actually think Lake County is well ahead of this. From my understanding, every organization that has a budget over a million dollars has more than five people on staff, full-time, in their organizations here in Lake County. And if you do get this, get this presentation, I did link that, the 2024 Colorado Nonprofit Economic Impact Report, if you want to take a closer look at that.
I can talk about the challenges of some of the, the funding when we have, a lot of this doesn't, I think now it's changing and funds can be used for general operating. So that can mean we can decide in our community if there's a need that comes up. And we had written, for example, I'm sorry, an example person storyteller. When we, when I was working at Lake County Build a Generation, a lot of the work I was doing was in manufactured home parks around renters' rights. And so that, one of the grants, that's specifically what we were supposed to do. The opportunity came up for residents, Cooperativa Nueva Unión, which is the park right behind Family Dollar, to organize and try to purchase that. So because we had some general operating money, we were able to pivot and able to help organize that piece. So I really like, I think a lot of it is changing to, to operating and multi-year funding. That was another difficult thing. Community organizing takes a long time. Or to set something up, a program that is needed, it takes a while. And so oftentimes what would happen, especially if it was one-year funding, we would start the planning, start to gather people and then, oh, this funding's ending. Either we have to find more funding in the meantime or it's, the funding is gone and the project didn't happen and, you know, losing community trust at some, sometimes. So those are kind of some of the, the challenges. Volunteers is always a challenge, especially in a small community where everybody has a lot going on. At Full Circle, the board has always tried to have 10 volunteers on the board. And I was just talking to Alice, she was like, I don't think we've ever gotten, we're not there, we have seven. And so, so that's also something that's difficult. Complex reporting, record keeping, yeah, they're all different by, by funder. So our accounting person has to really make sure that they're always watching all of that. And then, and Lisa, for example, ours is really good at moving funds. We're able to, to do so, but it's, yeah, keeping everything in order. And yeah, some, again, some of the, some grants aren't accessible without local government support. That's why we need that collaboration.
Does anyone else in the room or online have a challenge that you would want to share with the commissioners or?
Um, I do. Just like I brought up to the previous, yeah, in, in previous conversations with local government. We are often waiting for reimbursement from the government, from federal and state governments, sometimes like several, several months back. Which means we, our accounts receivable will be, I mean, ours last year got up to like $180,000 or something. That was money that we were waiting, money we had spent that we were waiting for reimbursements on. And we had submitted everything, it was just like a glitch at the state level. It was, it wasn't particularly as particular based. So even though we, those, those situations make it seem like we aren't being fiscally responsible or something like, why, why don't they have their money? And it's like, well, we're under contract to get that money. And but it's, there's literally nothing we can do. I mean, I had state reps calling, I was doing everything. It was just not coming in because of some thing at the state level. So I think that's something to be aware of, that part of the reason we need healthy reserves is we have to be able to weather those types of events. And if we, if we can't, then we, we had to shut down some of our services for a while. And it's not always our fault, it's really the system's fault. So I, I think there just needs to be increased awareness around that.
Jenny, did you say who you work for?
I'm sorry, I was just like, yeah, I'm saying you're, I'm Jenny Addit and he's the director of the Advocates Lake County, sorry.
And I'm Elizabeth Denchell, I'm the director of the National Mining Hall. So at least challenges for us, we're heavily dependent on things like ticket revenues. And so when they come in all summer long and then they just drop off at the end of October, that's when we really start to struggle towards the end of the year financially, not getting those revenues. And then also like recently, our utility bills and our enormous historic structure have toppled $8,000 a month. And so we start having to dip into reserves just to clear that out. And I will say, Emily, you said that, you thought that was the largest donation in Lake County?
Oh.
We raised $7 million in the last two years at the National Mining Hall. And we set up a sustainable endowment. So we're getting paid out all the time from the interest on the account. And one of the interesting nonprofit, one of our big challenges is we require highly specialized employees to come in and work in the museum. So we need conservators, historians, you know, things like that. And we have a very difficult time recruiting people to Lake County because there's no place to live. And even though they're highly specialized jobs, they're not paying a salary that can afford rental housing. So that's something that comes up repeatedly. We hired three positions this year, took us almost a year to fill them.
Have you guys looked into the, the separate, the, the housing up at the rail yard? There's all those, those two buildings, all those units and none of them have sold. So I wonder if anybody knows why they haven't sold or?
Some of those units have sold, just to clarify.
What's that?
Some of those units have sold, just to clarify. There's a restriction on those specific units, which I feel like we're getting a little bit in the weeds here. But it, we can talk offline about it if you'd like.
Typically our salaries, those are going to what, $750,000, $800,000?
Yeah, they're paying more now.
No, 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 those were, those were gig use fees.
Oh, you're talking about the?
Those are for 100% AMI. We can have a conversation about that up there.
I, I do think with that, like we all, we all as employers, we face all of the same challenges as every other employer in Lake County. But I, I have been particularly impressed by Lake County, not our nonprofits dedication to really trying to pay our staff a living wage or thriving wage to the best of our ability. And that oftentimes means that they don't qualify for things like deed restricted housing, if it's based on income. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they have the same salary trajectory as someone working at Climax in management, for example.
And also the ECLR plans are incredibly expensive. So like I pay for myself and my husband, our insurance is $1,800 a month. So that also adds another worry of like, we have to pay people some more so they can cover that. And I'm sure some people, like we cover 80% of the employee's ECLR plan, but that doesn't move on to their spouses or their children or anything like that. So we have, and that's not like that everywhere in Colorado. I don't know why it's so, bright health leading the market really affected nonprofits here and our ability to provide affordable health insurance for people.
Um, sorry, I just wanted to add some of the, I don't know about the, all the other nonprofits here, but a lot of the overhead that we get has been, what I have seen is 10% for overhead costs. Like that has been for a long time. Well, things are getting much more expensive. I think we have one funder that just recently upped it up to 15%.
You mean when you're applying for a grant, that how you're spending the money?
Yep, yep. That, and then we have very little, we, I don't, we don't have any funding where we can just give community members. Let me say if there's a need, like for the rental assistance program, for example, when we receive that money from the county, that was going directly to their landlords. Like we don't have any kinds of funds to give people like, hey, I'm, I'm having car troubles, I need to get to work. Here, let me give you this money so you can get that done. So all of that, it's not just, I think there's, I have heard like, well, don't you, can't you just give this money out? Can't you just purchase this for somebody? It's difficult to do that, especially after COVID, that's not popular anymore. Also, when doing community organizing, some of the, the places need of like, hey, we don't have a place based, didn't you get all this money? Didn't you all just get all these funds? Yes, and it's to do community organizing, not to purchase the things that you need for a park, for example.
I have Austin as well, I'm Sarah Edwards from the Tabor Hopper House Preservation Foundation. I'm the only full-time employee that the foundation has. And we get extraordinary grants to rehabilitate the building. You know, a million dollars from DOLA, but none of that DOLA grant can be spent on administrative costs. So, you know, though I might work to receive that grant on behalf of the foundation and we actually use it and fulfill our mission that way, none of those funds can be used to pay any of my salary, which again, so people are like, well, why do you need money? You have a million dollars. It's like, well, we wouldn't have staff if we don't have some operating expenses coming in. And often the support we receive from the county and the city and then individual donors helps break these gaps.
Thank you everyone for sharing. This is not an exhaustive list. If I missed anyone, I sincerely apologize. It was not on purpose. But this is a list of, I think it's almost 60, if not a little bit more, nonprofits that are operating in Lake County that are registered with a Lake County address. And I think this really speaks to the breadth of, of issues that we're working on and also how many of us there are. And we, you know, really nonprofits in Lake County, we're supporting outdoor recreation, healthcare, access to vital services. We're supporting our youth, we're supporting arts and culture. We're supporting animals in Lake County, we're supporting the environment. It's a huge variety.
Are these, they operate in Lake County as well? Or are all these based in Lake County?
They are based in Lake County.
Okay.
Um, I can tell you there are some on there that I do not know.
Yeah, I thought you was, was down valley or something.
Yeah, it could be that they have a, they're registered in Lake County and they work elsewhere. Or they, they could be like fiscally, they could be, their fiscal sponsor is here.
Got it, okay.
There's, there's a large variety. But I will say there are some on there that I, I had never heard of. But yeah, there's a lot of us. Not all are 501(c)(3)'s, there are different types of 501(c)s. But 501(c)(3)'s are the, the most common.
Cooper's a C4?
C6.
C6.
Right.
It's a C4.
Oh, it's a C4, sorry.
Yeah.
EDC is a C6.
That's correct.
Sorry, I'm a shit queen.
Sorry, Matt.
I don't even see the EDC on there.
It is, it's not the Lake County Economic Management, halfway down. It's all the Lake County ones.
Yeah, they're slow. Lake County.
I hope, I hope we walk away with thinking about an amazing amount of potential to partner, to cooperate and work together towards creating an awesome community. I mean, we're also, we're already pretty awesome, but part of the reason that there are so many is that it's a poor community and it has been for a long time. And nonprofits have really picked that up. So I, I am thrilled to think about, wow, if we could combine some of that stuff, work together with government and local businesses, it'd be pretty powerful.
Are you guys have a plan for possible federal cuts? The state's over budget by a billion, the county's definitely drawn down finances. Is there, I mean, I'm sure you guys have a contingency plan. Is there anything you could share with me on what you guys are seeing in the future?
So we have started a, we are working to start a community conversation that we would really love local government to be at that table to talk about what it's, what it would look like and how we can step in to support each other and recognizing that we all are going to have to make very hard decisions potentially. And how do we prioritize as a community what we really want to keep during those times? I can't speak for every organization on a contingency plan. For example, C4, we had a board meeting last night and that was a part of our discussion. As an organization, over the last few years, we have worked diligently to increase our reserves as well as increasing our own earned income, which now accounts for about 25% of our budget, which is dollars that we, we earn ourselves. And so we're really trying to diversify our budget. C4 fortunately doesn't receive any, any federal funding. So we're not worried about those cuts impacting us. We receive a very small amount of state funding. You all did generously support us again with a small amount of funding for 2025. And so, you know, together, it's a lot of funds to make up in our budget, but it's definitely something we're looking at. And we do, we do feel like private funding will become much more competitive. And so we are really thinking strategically about what are those funders that we've had long-term relationships with? How can we continue to grow our reserves and grow our own earned income to try to make up that difference in our budget? So I can't, again, I can't speak for other organizations. That's just what we're, we're doing at C4. I don't know if anyone else wants to?
Is there much overlapping services to any of the, I mean, are there any people up here that are both doing the same thing? In a sense that they could merge or combine or let them meet?
I think that we all serve overlapping clientele, or at least some of our organizations, and I would say across all of them we do. At least amongst our direct service nonprofits, we work very hard to make sure that we are not duplicating services, that we're really.
Well, even that service that you're overlapping isn't necessarily the same service. It might be the same person or family.
Yeah, um, and then Amy, I saw you raise your hand.
Well, I, I just wanted to point out, you know, in our case, and I, I feel very strongly that every nonprofit we have in this community does the absolute maximum leveraging they can with the funds that they receive. Our particular figure is that for every dollar that we have raised locally, either through the city, the county or individual donations, we have gained $8 from outside the community. And so I think that, I bet everybody here has a similar figure that, you know, an investor. that, you know, investments in the nonprofit sector, I mean, we, we, people that are in these organizations, they are working on mission critical things that they're very passionate about and are very fiscally responsible. And so I think continuing to have that conversation about what we can gain locally, what kind of an investment that is from local support to gain from outside. The, the federal funding is, is definitely scary for a lot of us. But certainly whatever we are able to, um, work, work around, it's, it's a great investment in our community. It comes back to you eight times in our case.
What's the number for you, Andy?
The Tabor Hopper House.
The Tabor.
Oh, okay.
Can I just piggyback on that? The Trail and Hundred Legacy Foundation, a hundred percent of our fundraising dollars come from outside of Lake County. All through the race events that are hosted by local racers. And we raised, I think, just over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars last year. And all of that money is put back into the local, Lake County community. So raise your hand if you've gotten grant funding from the Legacy Foundation. Literally, I mean, I could name off half the list.
And the students who go to this.
Um, so we try really hard to not have access or utilize any government funding. We try really hard to do everything we can to bring money into Lake County um, through the race events and the, and the, and then not even people that come here. We have contributors who used to raise twenty years ago and make five thousand dollar gifts every single year. And direct and lasting impact, not just on the people that live in the community, but all the people in this room who are providing services to the people that live in this community.
To the point of, I guess duplication of services. I think it's important to note that a lot of these nonprofits that work in their specific sector, whether it be outdoor recreation, like New Swims or, uh, Mineral Bell Trail or, um, you know, any of the direct service nonprofits, we collaborate all the time. I think if there was an opportunity to simplify, we already would have. This is one of the spaces where I think the nonprofits kind of have an edge, where it's mass collaboration with one another and strong partnerships already established with other nonprofits. And most of the time that, like, we are very intentional about what it is that we're targeting and making sure that we recognize that, um, we all have different missions, we all have different values. And there are certain things that like C four can never take away from any other organization because of our specific mission and values. And we have to uphold that when it comes to our fiscal responsibility and our duties to the board as well as to our mission and values. So I think that's a very key part of how the organizations interact. And again, there is a lot of collaboration within those organizations already to kind of simplify and streamline some of these resources. So we're really maximizing the funds as much as possible.
It's a benefit of being in a small town too.
Yeah.
In fact, everyone kind of knows what everybody does, what's your focus? I've, I've definitely had conversations with folks about funding and I'm like, you know, you probably should talk to C four about that. They're already doing that or they're already doing it really well. We're not really the place that should be supporting that because someone's already doing it. And I think that's, there is a lot of nonprofits in Lake County, but I think they all work really well together because everyone kind of knows what everyone does.
Does, how do you, how much you guys, or does any of you work with health and community services?
All of our direct service nonprofits engage with, with DHS and public health to the, um, to the best of our ability in those relationships. I know a number of us are on the SNAP subcommittee of the Lake County Food Access Coalition. I know members of your staff are on the Food Access Coalition, I believe the Housing Coalition. And we're pretty, I refer community members back and forth quite frequently. A lot of, at least again at C four, a lot of our financial assistance applications, so we help with applications from outside of the community for state and federal programs. They oftentimes screen for if someone is utilizing those services. And so if they aren't, we can always bring it to their, we bring it to their attention. I think our, I would say overall, our, our collaborative relationships with DHS and public health, I think really have improved over the last year and I see them continuing to improve.
Local support seems like a key component of this. And, you know, to Veronica's point, it feels like, you know, we are in such a small community that everybody knows each other and we all know what we're doing. But I do feel like there's just this huge, not huge, but there's a very real misconception in the community about what you guys do. And, um, I'm just like, what are ideas that we can use to combat negative perceptions of what all the local nonprofits are doing? Like, you guys know what I'm talking about, like people are like, oh, you know, they've just got their hand in the pot. They just want money, that, you know, all this stuff that we all, we all hear it, you know, and it's, it's damaging. You know, like you guys need local support, you need volunteers, you need the donations. But, you know, what, what are like ideas that we could like brainstorm or, or come up with to like combat some of this? You know, it's not like, oh, they can go to our website and see what we do. Like, people aren't really doing that and they almost don't trust the word right from the horse's mouth. So it's like, you know, like a, like something in the paper or like some kind of community outreach drive or just.
I think what's tricky, Andy, is, and, and we've tried to do this with the Legacy Foundation. We have been a part of the Lake County community as a five oh one C three since two thousand and two. Like it's a long time, right? And people still don't know that we give a two thousand dollar donation to every student who graduates from a local school.
Yeah.
And we're just like, how do people not know that? We've been doing it for twenty years. We talk about it in the paper every year. We put it on social media every year. But if you don't read the paper that week or you missed the post on social media, like you don't know that because you didn't see the paper that week. Or you don't have a child in the school district or you, you know, which is, I think the audience is so, our audiences are so varied and vast that what might work for us wouldn't work for a full circle or what works for your clientele wouldn't work for our families. And so it's, it's such a tricky, it's, it's not sort of a one stop fits all. I think we have to do all the things. I think we have to put the article in the paper. We have to post it on social media. We have to talk about it when we have a show at the Tabor. We have to have signage at the farm. We have to do all the things in all the ways and we're still not probably going to touch everybody.
The stats are impressive, you know, like when you say how much money you're bringing from outside the community right here, I mean, that would shut most of it up right there. And, but people just don't know this. So I'm, I'm feeling like there's a need for like a unified messaging between like everybody, you know, like I feel like we've kind of seen this between the city and the county and like that maybe there's like some kind of way we can get just that, you know, just, just different ideas for communicating with the community, like help things out.
I just think, in a general view, in this country, the nonprofit sector is a social safety net. That's, that's one factor, I mean, besides the fact that we've got a world renowned museum here that is, if you go in, it's like going to a facility. I mean, that's one tremendous asset we have. But I think looking at the nonprofit sector, this is our social safety net. You know, if you go to Europe, you go to Scandinavia, you don't see homeless people on the street because the government takes care of that. In our country, it's, it is the nonprofit sector who takes care of that. And I think, I mean, the other thing, I think from a philosophical standpoint, I mean, us that grew up privileged, I grew up privileged. I was taught growing up that, um, those that have been given tremendous opportunities, it's our role to give back. And I think that's a value that, why I'm involved here working. So anyway, that's, I think some things to consider that, um.
Yeah, Jenny?
I just want to say, I, I love the idea of a unified message. I, I had a recent experience on social media, kind of trying to tackle some of the misconceptions by myself on one of the pages that are run by some folks, and they were just deleted twice. So I, I mean, if, it, it has to be a page that you guys control or the message if they don't, like when they're banned, they'll just delete it. So, um, if it could come like from Lake County government, did you know, blah, 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 blah?
Local nonprofits one oh one, make do.
Yeah, and, and then you guys have control of, of the content. But I, I feel and probably some others in the room that our attempts to engage some of the people who are, or have such a negative, um, approach, um, are not going in.
It's also a personal attack when they respond to your communication in a negative way, which doesn't feel right because it's like I'm responding as an individual in support or defense of the organization that I work for. And I'm being personally attacked just because I want to share additional information or try to share accurate information. And, and so that the rules to some of that method of communicating also don't feel particularly supportive of the process of sharing.
Yeah, engaging on social media is not a good strategy in ninety-nine point nine percent of those situations.
I think you raised a really good point that like as a council member, for example, is something that's worth highlighting is that a lot of the time you can't allow it to come from the horse's mouth either, right? It's like, I as an elected have a responsibility to educate my constituents whenever I have conversations with them about various nonprofits of what services they offer. That's a role that I personally play. And us as a group of, uh, city council people, um, I think it'd be beneficial to your point again to have like a unified message of like, hey, even if we don't ponder or don't agree with certain parts or whatever it is, here's what resources these people may offer, here's what they're doing as community member or community organizations, um, and benefiting community members. So I think that's a really good point that you highlight that like, for example, with the city could do better in terms of communicating and helping kind of really set the narrative straight as to what it is that actually is being done by, um, city, or sorry, nonprofits. And likewise for nonprofits to speak, um, with, for example, our, you know, constituents about the work that you all are doing at DHS and the improvements that are being made. It's our responsibility to likewise try to lift that up and say, hey, look, they've done these changes. You know, we encourage you all to try again. We're welcome to, you know, walk with you and hold your hand through the whole process. And rebuild that trust. So I think that's the mutually beneficial part of it. And like to your point, that other, these other three sectors, the business sector and the government sector, need to speak up in support of it, sitting with government sector needs the support of the business sector and like, you know, so on, so on. So I think that's a really important part to highlight of all of that.
And I think to, can I just share?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I'm Carly with Build a Generation. And to your point, there's not really a method that will reach everyone. And so I do think it's all necessary, but one thing that I've been working with Tim and Lori on is hosting some town halls this year, like quarterly in-person meetings where there's a lot of misinformation about nonprofits, but there's also a lot of misinformation about county government, about city government, about like all the recreation work. And I think, yeah, getting people in person in a room allows us to interact really differently than the social media that we see. And so I don't think that that's like the silver bullet solution either, but we at Build a Generation are going to work with the city and the county to put on those town halls. And one of them could have a focus area around nonprofits too.
I don't think that's your target audience. The one thing I've noticed is that the same people show up to this, to the events, it's all the same people.
I totally agree. One thing that I would like to do is actually take questions off of social media that we're actually seeing posted there and respond to them in this way and we can livestream it to that platform. I think it'll be like a slow start because you're exactly right, like people aren't showing up to these things, but I do want to try it. I do want to get people in the same space and have you all there and have city representatives there and have nonprofit leaders there to actually say like, hey, we saw on social media that people are curious about this and here's the answer to that.
We do have a big thousand one we're trying to organize for next week for Harrison Ballfield. And I think that would be maybe a lot of the same people.
I would also say, there used to be a nonprofit group that met regularly, business after hours that was hosted by the chamber for years. And you used to, every month include a nonprofit along with the business that was hosting the business after hours. Just as another way to have representation once a month. Again, if it's the same people showing up, you're going to be hitting the same people. But you just never know, maybe someone's interested to go to a business after hours because of the business that's hosting it.
If we have a big community meeting around a few really contentious issues, those, both sides are going to kind of.
Greg, I saw your hand up up there for a couple times.
Okay, I, I'd love to make your comment if you guys don't mind.
I don't know.
Um, I, you know, I, I first was on city council in twenty thirteen and I felt the way, same way some of you I think do, that I didn't really understand nonprofits or what they did. And it didn't take me long to learn to really appreciate and, and then grow into really a love of our nonprofits, you know, over the eleven years I was on city council. So I think, when I think about that, I think our proudest moment, you know, was the pandemic. You know, and what we as a community accomplished during that time, it was quite frankly amazing. Don't want to go down that rabbit hole. Everybody in this room, I think, was involved in that in some way or another. It's something that as a community we should be really proud of. But the proudest moment was about a year into all this, I get a call from Matt Kirker. Some of you guys may know Matt, he's Senator Bennett's aide and he deals with us in Leadville a, a lot. And Matt calls me and he says, what are you guys doing in Leadville? I said, Matt, you're going to have to be a little more specific, you know? And he said, I just heard from my Washington DC office that you guys are doing something in Leadville with, with keeping people housed and food and utilities. And I said, yeah, you know, like, and, and he said, he said, my whole Washington DC office wants to talk to you in Leadville. And I said, Matt, aren't they doing this everywhere? He said, no, they're doing this nowhere. And we were, we didn't know it. We were so unique in our approach to that time and how we as a community rose up to that. And so, uh, we got on the phone, it was Full Circle, Build a Generation. I think maybe C four was on that phone call with Matt, with the DC office for Senator Bennett. And they were just amazed at what we did. And I cannot even begin to tell you how proud I was of our community. So, um, that's, that's been my experience with our non, with the nonprofits and the city and county government. And it was amazing.
Yeah.
I just, I just want to shout out to Greg too, as a model, um, local government official for the nonprofit community. I mean, Greg, we can always count on Greg to do a, a letter of support for a grant or to promote our events and speak about them enthusiastically and come and, and to give us and respect our autonomy. I think that's very important. There has been a lot of government overreach saying, alright, this letter of support, if you give us all of your financials for the last year or something, that's, that's not appropriate at all. That's not an appropriate request. And so it puts us in this weird position where that's, do we get the support or we don't? Or we only get the support if we are, are really go under undue levels of scrutiny? And I just, Greg does not do that. And if you want to follow what has worked, it's Greg. Let's maybe chat with him about how he supports us.
Why is that inappropriate?
So we have, we're businesses, right? So for you to say, we want to see how much money you spent on health insurance, on employee X, is that, that invades our privacy in a way that's not, um, that doesn't feel good. And I was told by council is not legal. So we can say, yeah, we're happy to provide the nine ninety information, which is on the Secretary of State website at any point. We're happy to tell you what we're doing. We're not happy to, um, to kind of play that game of, of quid pro quo when, when no one else is, is doing that. You either support the project or you don't. Um, and so I think that's something that's been very, um, difficult to navigate.
Are you talking about the previous years?
The previous, the previous years, yes. So that's something that we would really like to see improved, uh, going forward.
Yeah, I think, Matt, to your, the question you asked about like how are we, or sorry, it was you, Andy, who asked the question about like, there's this negativity in the community right now. And I think we've all, everyone in this room has been called out to some degree as part of that. And I think that's in part why we're here, because we see our local government as a necessary partner to the work that we are doing in this community. And we want to have a collaborative relationship. And to Jenny's point, there are times at which the way that we treat each other really erodes that relationship. And we're here because we want to set a new path forward with you all. And we want to help you all achieve your goals while you're in office. And we would love to see that reciprocated in a way that it maybe hasn't been in the past. And, and we thought that this was a great way to start off so that we.
And we thought that this was a great way to start off so that we could all clearly understand how we how we operate. Um, and so that we can build a new relationship and we can help you, um, you know, I think most of us in the room want to be a part of the. The meeting on housing that that you referred to, Matt, um, housing is something a lot of us care about and work on. Whether it's in our mission or it's an issue that our employees face. Um, and that's, that's really why we're here, so that we can all support each other and really try to shift the narrative in our community. Um, yeah.
I think communication is gonna be the key, you know, like. Speaking for myself personally, I'm so new at this, I might ask questions that might be offensive. You know, I might say something like, hey, well, you know, can you tell us how many cents of every dollar is getting to the 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 streets to the people who need it, you know? Because I don't know any better, and that that might not come off right. So if I, you know, if we say something like that, if us do or our staff, tell us, we'll try and improve and, you know, try to just. Detach some of the emotions from these things and we'll do our best to, you know, moving forward, not repeat any mistakes that have been made in the past. And if, but you know, reciprocally, if that's ignored, uh, just communicate with us and let us know, you know, if. How things are are going and see if we can just kind of hit the reset button, close it.
I'd like to say, I think it's really important that people do ask questions that they think are offensive. I I really do.
Maybe even a disclaimer.
No, but I mean, like, to us, simply because we should have a high level of transparency and openness with our communities.
Yeah, careful.
And just observationally watching the interactions, I think sometimes as nonprofits, we take for granted impact. Because we think all of our work is mission driven, so everything we're doing is good, but it may not have a good impact on somebody else. And we have a responsibility to listen to that and to validate those people's concerns and not dismiss them. And not, you know, John talked about being privileged, and I've seen this a lot where someone says, I'm concerned about this, and they're like, you're privileged, you don't have to do that. That's not a fair response to our community members coming from nonprofits because we're trying to help everybody in some capacity. And even people that we think are privileged, like you have an apartment or whatever, when I first moved here, I lived at Eagle's Nest. And lived in the middle of an asbestos spill, and I did not feel privileged when I was living there, I had no way out, we had no help. Um, so I think we have to really listen to what people are saying because if we're not serving that particular person, the impact on them may be different. And we have to recognize that, or we're gonna alienate people in our community over whatever issue they have concern about. And just, that's what I feel like I've watched, is that we've been talking past each other, like we're talking about the same thing, but in a different way. And everyone won't come off the gas on their opinion uh to listen to the other person. So communication is supposed to be too, is we have to listen, we have to validate, even if we don't agree with the other person.
That's a really good point, and I would like to go back to the point of it being appropriate to ask for financials just because I don't know. And before I got into office, I thought maybe that was a good idea, maybe. Maybe if you have ten people all making a hundred thousand and you get one point two million. You know, just as an example, again, please don't be offended, as as Andy said, but uh. Is there some sort of rating system, or is there some way that we can feel better about salaries versus. Versus good to the community?
You mean within the nonprofits that are?
Yeah.
So this survey that Emily mentioned, the Colorado Nonprofits Association survey is. Done by the Colorado nonprofits every two years, and they survey nonprofits all around Colorado when it comes to salary and benefits for their staff.
Hmm.
So if you were to review the salary survey, it would show you in each region of Colorado, in each sector of nonprofit industry. Um, size of budget, what they are paying their executive director, for example, twenty fifth percentile, fiftieth percentile, seventy fifth percentile. So when I talk to my board about my salary, I give them information from the nonprofit survey that speaks to what our other EDs earning. Based on my tenure and our budget in this area, based on what we're doing, what kind of work we're doing. And that's how we figure out a number for my budget. That compensation policy is a requirement of the IRS. So the IRS requires nonprofits to be able to show the IRS, how do you figure out your staff's salary? Because of the concern that nonprofits were paying their EDs four hundred thousand dollars a year, which trust me, is not happening in Lake County. But there is a process behind behind that, um, to try to sort of manage, okay, you're raising all this money and then your staff are getting paid exorbitant rates. How are you putting that back into the community?
But that's also, it's subjective too, like you can go onto ProPublica and look, and you can look at candid profiles. But typically, we have donors ask for our financials, if you're a donor and you don't agree with how we're allocating our funds, you're not required to donate to the nonprofit. And it's completely a legitimate concern for a donor or even a community member to look at financials and say, I don't agree with this. But like as an executive director, we set the budget, the board approves it, the board sets our salaries. But people are completely within their right to criticize that, I don't think there's anyone here who's free from that. Um, I would say probably museum has a pretty high nonprofit salary because we have specialized positions that are in the museum. And so people could choose not to donate, but likely, our donors wanna make sure that we have financial stability before they will donate. But if someone wants to critique salaries and stuff, that's why it's all public information. Um, I don't, I don't think it's, I think we're all within the bounds of being criticized for our budgets.
Uh, then I'm sorry, I wanna clarify because this is coming off something, I just heard it. So I think the importance is respect, we all have outside counsel. And if we come back to one of your requests saying, this exceeds the bounds of the normal lender request, we're not comfortable with it, we consulted with our attorney. You gotta respect that, right? We're autonomous entities, we all have representation, um, people who specialize in nonprofit law. Mm-hmm. And if it's a no, okay, but um, but it's it's respecting our role and our autonomy, that really has not been there in the past. And our right to go to our attorney and then come back and be like, that's a little too far, we've never been asked that before. I also think to to what Jenny said and what what we're talking about here, there there is a very big difference between. If the B O C C is considering funding an organization. Or if the request is, can you simply write a letter of support? I think it's a very normal thing in the nonprofit world for us to provide financials. And if that's something the B O C C wants to take into consideration when you are receiving requests for funding from nonprofits, that's well within. Within your right to do so, and it's something we're very used to doing. Um, I think the challenge has maybe been in the past, some of those were, we haven't had those requests when we've submitted funding requests to the B O C C. But they've come in other places.
Not from the B O C C.
Um, not from.
Not at the time of a funding request.
Not at the time of a funding request, but perhaps at the time of the request for a letter of support. Um, and I think that is in the nonprofit world, we're all very used to, okay, we're asking for something, we have to give something in return. And it's often, I think we're used to those requests being um on the same level of, like, they're kind of equal to each other.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that we're not asking.
You're not given a whole IRS audit report for requesting for a letter of support for programming, wanna?
Yeah, yeah, and.
I didn't find it on.
Which you could find anyway, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, again, like we've said, it it is publicly available and um. Quite frankly, I have my approach to some of the online conversation, I've reached out to individuals. To ask them to get coffee, to go out to lunch, to get to know each other. Um, I found out that one of the individuals talking about me personally um is actually one of my neighbors, and I had no idea. Um, but we had lunch and, you know, we're we're getting to know each other, and I don't know if we'll ever be friends. Um, but I think, you know, one of the things that came up in our conversation is it's. If you do have a question, please reach out and ask, and ask the group that you have the question about. I'm sure that many county employees would rather our constituents came to you, came to their department before posting online. Um, and I think, you know, for all of us to build mutual respect, we really have to start there. So if you have questions about us, please come and ask, I know that a number of us are working to get work sessions scheduled with you all. Please ask questions about our specific organizations, um, if there is information you want us to bring, um, please let us know. We're happy to provide it, I think where our community is getting into this dangerous place is we're posting these open-ended questions online. And we're leaving it open for people to assume that there's something wrong. Um, and I think maybe that's how we felt in the past is when, when our organizations have been asked questions by the government, it. It feels like we've done something wrong, when if we could all sit down and have a conversation, I don't think that's. That's anyone's intention, and I I think we can get past it. Um, and so I think that's, that's why we're, again, why we're here today is to to open those channels of communication. We want to talk to you all, we want to be transparent, um, it's absolutely okay to ask questions. Um, I think we all need to recognize when we're asked questions that we might not like the answer, um, and that's okay.
But I think it it's it's a matter of degree, so asking for a financial, you'll get an overview of, you know, how sound they are, what their purpose is, all that kind of stuff. But if you wanna ask about, like, what clients are you, what specific names, that that goes to a whole nother level, that's probably confidential information. Depends on the organization, but so it it probably just sort of depends the level of question that you might have. Um, and and I think it's a a communication thing, so you can ask the question, but if the other organization is saying. Well, we can't really release the names of our clients, whatever, but we can tell you how many clients, then that that kind of changes the conversation a bit.
I would like to say we're familiarizing ourselves with personal attacks.
Yeah.
I'll just, I wanna just thank you all for wanting to listen and learn and 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 for everybody being here, I mean, I think this is a tremendous session. And I'm really excited that, you know, willingness to understand, I think, I think nationally, I think there's been a lot of abuse in the nonprofit sector. And um, at the highest highs, I won't go any further than that, but at the highest highs levels, horrific abuse. And um, but I'm I'm really proud with our community and services of nonprofits here. And I think maybe some of that um that you hear maybe is that perception that we hear nationally of what's happening in the nonprofit sector.
You're talking about national nonprofit organizations.
Yeah, outside of Lake County, like, you know, some some mega organizations that, um, I mean. There's been abuse, abuse of the the nonprofit.
Some steak dinners, let's just say so.
Steak and lobster dinners.
What's that, what's that?
Some steak dinners. Purchased.
Like the NFL, right? The NFL wasn't a nonprofit.
Yeah. I do, before we, I wanna thank all of you for coming, and I I also wanna say, um, it's. I think it's important to me to also acknowledge that like you all have different clientele, different missions, but also like different levels of service. And for the people who provide direct services to those who are in like emergent care needs. I just wanna give you all grace, that sometimes you feel like you have to maybe present the perfect reason, or like speak. Perfectly to be understood, and I I just wanna honor that you all are dealing with people's like life and death needs every day. Some of you, right? And so when we have these like attacks on nonprofits, it upsets me that like. There's this extra level of emotional work that some of you have to do to be able to show up to those. To those conversations as like an everyday citizen who's objective and reasonable, whereas at home. Or back in your everyday work, you're you're dealing with people's lives and deaths. And I know that we experienced that, especially with DHS too, and so we've also been trying to like. Provide that we have these director, specifically director and deputy director levels, they're trying to be accountable to us. But they are also up at like one in the morning, trying to make sure that a four month old is getting into emergency care. So I I I just wanna acknowledge that like sometimes we have not, as a county, not we, we just got here. But um, like as a county, you've not always been honored or respected in the work that you're doing, and I and I know that's caused harm. And I am really hoping and feel that there's potential that we could really work together as we're all going to meet each other in the next now. So thank you all for the work that you do every day and thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you outside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also wanna shout out, I know that not all volunteer boards and employees are paid, and some of us are very lucky to be paid to be here today, but I wanna shout out everyone. That is doing this work on their own time, um, it is still so important and contributes so much to our community.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks Emily.
Thanks for doing that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
It's so funny that happens.
Sorry.
Officially, we're thinking we're gonna have any more conversations after this?
Oh, I don't know, sorry, sorry, totally.
I don't know if it needs to be on public or my, my, well, it's something.
Having to connect with you on the uh, the TV housing trust thing, kind of word that, if you'd like, I'd like to talk to you.
Thanks for doing it.
Hi.
I don't know, I have this.
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What, what time and days were scheduled?
Yes, we're still recording, because we're very.
I mean, I just wanted to give you our, this is the one we gave to the.
Do you have my clothes in there? Uh, I was wondering if there's any more things we just discussed for a few minutes or so maybe while we were all unofficial, so. Um, just about some of the stuffs we were thinking about trying to, I guess it's on the agenda that.
No. I mean, we are talking schedules tomorrow, so we could have a broader.
What about tomorrow?
Um, I'm aware of this thing in Telus, so.
Obviously, yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, Kirk tomorrow, okay, cool, then what does Friday look like then? It is twelve twenty eight P M.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure as well, we are going officially having this work session in Lake County, Florida County, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you.